Just waiting on names.
We're good.
Well, good evening, everyone. Call to order this meeting of the Willow City Council, regular meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Item two in our agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Fire Chief Nate Monk, would you do the honors, lead us in pledge, please?
Dan. Luke. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with all its resources and all.
Thank you, Chief. Item three, roll call. City Clerk Amos Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas, here. Councilmember Vodden, here. Councilmember Sprague is absent this evening, feeling under the weather. Vice Mayor Hudson, here. And Mayor Hanson, here. I'm present and accounted for.
Thank you, Amos. Item four, changes to the agenda. City Manager Marty Brown, any changes?
There are no changes.
Thank you, ma'am. Item five, ceremonial matters. Item five A, we have a proclamation, Poppy Day. It's a Poppy Day proclamation, and Carol Lemonager is here representing. Good evening, Carol. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. And I'll read the proclamation at this time. City Willow's proclamation, National Poppy Day. Whereas America is a land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens' soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I, Gary Hanson, mayor of the city of Willow's, on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, hereby proclaim May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as National Poppy Day, and urge all citizens of Willow's to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on the Friday before Memorial Day. A witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and official seal this twenty-third day of April, two thousand and twenty-four. Carol? Please.
She's been there before.
For the longest time, Barbara used to come and present those to us. It was such a sweetheart. Did it religiously forever. She is a miss. She used to come to the racetrack and hand those, you know, sit in the chair at the end for you, do her thing.
Item six, presentation. Item six A, Senior Fair presentation. We're going to receive a presentation from Glen County Supervisor Monica Rossman on the upcoming Senior Fair. And, uh, Rossman, or, uh, Monica, I'm sorry. Ms. Rossman, good to see you tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
I know Supervisor Yoder was supposed to come, but I decided to come in instead. He is out of town. So I appreciate you, gentlemen, for letting me come in and speak.
We're happy to have you.
Yes. So June twenty-seventh, we are going to be having a senior expo. It's going to be the very first ever for Glen County. What started out as a thought turned in, it just started breeding and going, and now we have the whole entire space of the fairgrounds in Orland taken up with all different kinds of booths for people fifty-five and older, strictly for seniors. So we have everything from AARP to waste management, health and human service, literally everything you can think of. We're going to be having somebody, whenever you come into the building, you're going to be having your glucose checked, you're going to have your blood pressure checked. Walmart ended up donating a pallet of water. They ended up donating a pallet of toilet seat risers, shower chairs. Whenever you leave, you're going to get a goodie bag full of something that is going to make your life a little bit easier, whether it be shoehorns, crossword puzzles, little pill dispensers. We are looking at having, uh, like a thing that goes on your refrigerator, you know, for easy and available for the fire department should, unfortunately, if they should have to come to your home, all your information is on there. We will be having a licensed notary there doing free notaries all day long, doing POAs, and they're going to laminate it, and they're going to put magnets on the back and stick it on the refrigerator for the senior. We have side-by-sides out in the parking lot in case somebody cannot make it into the facility from their vehicle. Somebody will be there in order to take them from their car to whatever building they would like to go to. And Assemblymember James Gallagher ended up, he's going to be sponsoring the meal. So we're going to have a little picnic for the day. So that was fantastic. And yeah, so it's going to be a great time. And I'm just here spreading the word, letting everybody know that that's what we're doing. And I actually, I encourage everybody, if you can tell two to three seniors, or anybody that you can, anybody fifty-five and older in order to come to this event, I really want this to be something that happens, you know, every single year that we have this. This is something that the seniors look forward to. We're doing a lot of advertising and being in the paper. We just got the bus wrap. So there's a sign on the side of the bus. We're going to be on the news, radio. So yeah, so it's going to be a great time. Just to give you a little history on this, what started with this was I had a hundred-and-four-year-old client, and she lost her IHSS worker. She was hungry. She had no food. She didn't know what she was going to do. And so she ended up calling me, her hairdresser, and said, I need help. Whenever I found out that, you know, it was, she was only getting a certain amount of money a month from her CalFresh. She was only getting thirty-four dollars a month for groceries, which none of us can live off of that, absolutely none. And then I started diving deeper and deeper, and the more deeper that I got, the more upset I got, and the more passionate I got about this. And so that's what prompted this. And with Supervisor Yoder's help, we've been able to form this plan that ended up becoming this. And I'm very grateful, and I'm excited. And yeah, so that's my presentation. So is there any questions?
Thank you, Monica. That's a great.
Yes, I'm really excited.
Leading the way, promote.
Yes, that's our plan. And I'm asking everybody, I'm actually, you know, I'm challenging everybody, tell at least two to three seniors that you can, June twenty-seventh at the Orland Fairgrounds, and it's going to be from ten to three, in the, from ten in the morning until three in the afternoon. I think it's going to, there's going to be cooling stations because, you know, it is going to be in June, the weather is going to be unpredictable. So we will have cooling stations for them. There's going to be an area there. There's a lot of good things that the senior centers do, and senior nutrition. And whenever I speak to a senior, they say, well, I didn't know about it. You know, there's Tai Chi, there's Bunko, there's all these different things that they're doing that would, you know, we're on a loneliness committee for aging seniors. And the one thing that they say is, I didn't know about it. I had no idea about it. I didn't know that they did Tai Chi. I didn't know they did this. So they're going to be there, and they're going to try and recruit people just to get out of their house a little bit. You know, COVID put quite a big, uh, big impact on them. So, yeah, so that's what we're doing. So I thank you, gentlemen, very much for letting me come before you.
Yeah, thank you for coming down.
Absolutely.
Do you have flyers or anything? Are you going to have any posters or flyers?
So there should be one in front of you.
One on your desk.
I looked at it.
You're a senior, David.
Yes, so we will be handing these out. There is also a Glen County Senior Nutrition Facebook page. If you go to it, you can follow and like and make sure that you spread the word. We're going to be promoting on there as well. So, yeah, so I challenge everybody, tell at least two to three seniors. I appreciate it. There you go. I appreciate it.
It's just, yeah, you're very welcome.
I'm too young.
It's a good idea just to get the information on because there's so many, just a ton of programs out there available. It's just, you know, getting the word out, you know, letting people know about it.
And that's the hard thing is nobody knew about it. Nobody knows about these things. And there's so many things that, yeah, so.
Very good.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
Yeah, good luck. Item seven, public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters in the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. And as a reminder by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First, first off, are there any public comments in reference to the consent calendar this evening? Oh, hello. Laurie, you're the only one left? Okay, okay, very good. Is there any public comment tonight? Any public comment? Okay, okay, very good. Okay, the consent calendar, item seven A, register approval. Consider approval of the general checking payroll and direct deposit check registers. Item seven B, minutes approval. Consider approval of the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four council meeting minutes. Item seven C, emergency vehicle operations course, also known as EVOC, liability waiver. Consider authorization, authorizing the city manager or her destiny to sign an indemnification agreement to allow for use of the county facility located at four fifty-three East County Road, twenty-nine and a half, Willow's, California for EVOC training. And item seven D, annual weed and rubbish abatement schedule. Consider adoption of a resolution declaring weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt, public nuisances, and approve the weed and rubbish abatement schedule for the two thousand and twenty-four fire season.
I have two questions with regard to that. I don't necessarily pull the items for approval. The minutes approval under discussions and action at six C, we discussed having two thousand dollars of that four thousand allocated to the ten thousand dollars. Does that need to be in the minute?
I think we didn't actually take action that way. I mean, I've noted it myself to do it that way, but that wasn't actually the way the action occurred. And so the minutes just reflect.
Okay.
The action that occurred. If you want to change that, we could certainly bring it back.
You will do that.
Correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Second item is, under the resolution, you need to make a change. There's one correction to the date that was in the agenda for the hearing on protest. Council orders abatement award to contract to abate. That meeting was set in the agenda as May twenty-first. Correct date is May fourteenth, two thousand and four. So for that correction, I would move to approve the.
I have a point of information, and I didn't know we could just talk to it. So I just wanted, under item A, register approval, I would like to state for the record and anybody listening or otherwise, that in the April sixteenth, accounts payable register, we show a check for four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents to the Glen County Sheriff's Department. I think people should know that.
Thank you, David. That would be for law enforcement services. So, anything further?
No, thank you.
Anything for you? No, I just have, you know, Chief Monk, good evening. Good to see you. Just a basic question in reference to the annual weed abatement. Pretty, you know, always the initial, the initial run is, it's pretty, pretty thick document. How many, how many addresses are on this list?
I believe it's five hundred and ninety-nine.
Too many for me to count. Five ninety-nine. We usually run about three fifty or four hundred, right, average?
The last couple, the last two years have been pretty high because we've had the fortunate weather of having rain. And so they've been a lot higher the last couple of years because the rain makes the weeds grow and keeps people from being able to get out and cut their weeds. So we kind of expected it to be a little bit busier, or a little bit more than than normal over the last ten-year average, I'd say.
No, thank you. Well, you know, as I told you before, when you signed up, you took the note to become a fire chief. I mean, unfortunately, this comes with it. It's, it's, it's not, it's not fun, but it's a public safety issue. It needs to be done, you know? Some people need the reminder, so.
Well, actually, my address is on that list.
Is it? Uh-oh.
And I've bowled those weeds in that alley three times already this year.
You're a skull flop.
Three times in the last three weeks would be accurate, based on the weather.
They, they, yeah, the weeds, my weeds, my weeds, okay, at the ranch, they're growing about in the worm base. I swear they're growing too interested.
Oh, it's terrible.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good.
And it rained again this morning, and water coming in.
It did. It rained on me hard. Yes, yes. Anyway. Okay, Chief. And, and just out of curiosity, the EVOC course, how often do your, your, the engineers and fire captains have to complete that training?
So we're supposed to do it annually to get everybody through EVOC, that drives. We haven't been able to do that, so we're trying to get back on that schedule, but it's supposed to be an annual thing to at least get them through a cone course and do a little refresher on defensive driving tactics and, and like code three law, new case law when it comes to driving. So it's supposed to be annually. We're trying to get a little bit closer to being able to do that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. That's, that's all I have. Just a couple of basic questions. So thank you. Anything further, gentlemen? Councilmember Thomas moved to approve the consent calendar as approved?
As amended.
As amended.
To the resolution.
amended with, in reference to the resolution on item seventy. Good spot, by the way. I missed that. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Vodden has the second to approve the consent calendar as amended. Further discussion? City Clerk Hoover, since there's a resolution, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Vodden?
Hey. Hi.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Hi, Mayor Terrence Four Zero. Thank you. Thank you, Amos. Item eight, discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. And again, please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. When the mayor calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. And once again, as a reminder by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any public comments on any of the action items this evening? And I'll call again as we go through those. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Laurie, to our audience. Okay. Item eight A, solar power purchase agreement, wastewater treatment plant. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a power purchase agreement with RP Willow Solar One LLC to install ground mount solar panels at the city's wastewater treatment plant to offset the city's PG&E bill. Marty Brown, before I turn it over to Joe, do you have any, any comments?
Just quickly, I want to say that this has been a long process getting here to this evening, as all of you know. And so we're really pleased to be able to finally bring this forward and help save the sewage enterprise funds, some additional funds by hopefully, if, you know, it's council discretion, but if the project is approved, be able to save some money in the fund. I also wanted to mention that I, we appreciate your questions in advance, and we tried to get them out to as quickly as possible. Didn't get out till about one or one-thirty this afternoon, and there's a hard copy of that email on the dais for all of you to review. And then some additional information that was handed out by Joe just before the meeting about cost savings, kind of a comparison between PG&E and Trinary Capital's proposal. So we hope that all of this information together is really going to be able to help keep the council informed on this decision, and hopefully the project moves forward. With that, I'll hand it over to Joe to make the formal presentation.
Well, thank you, Marty. County Development Services Director, Joe Benford. Joe?
Good evening, council. Yeah, as Marty mentioned, the, the main goal of this is to create some, some savings by reducing our PG&E true-up bill, which has been pretty spectacular, to say the least, the last couple of years. We did have some issues with our system, our old system, which is Clearway, owned by Clearway. It was not operational. For, for a couple of months out of that, we finally got that fixed and have been producing good, good amounts out of that system currently, about fifty percent of the overall need of the wastewater treatment plant, which is about a million kilowatt hours a year. With that said, we, we signed a letter of intent back in December for, for three facilities, one being the civic center here, the firehouse, and the wastewater treatment plant. By far, the wastewater treatment plant is the largest, and that'll be the, the item we're looking at today. This will be a big enough system, it's a four-hundred-one kilowatt system, to cover the, the full utility use of the wastewater treatment plant. The reduced rate will be per kilowatt, it's eighteen cents with Trinary in year one, with a three percent escalator over a twenty-five-year period. You can see in the handout, the current, the average kilowatt we paid in March from PG&E was forty-one cents. It jumps up and down depending on if we're at the peak time use or off use, but the average was, was forty-one cents per kilowatt. So we've got some, obviously, some big savings that we can have by signing up for solar. You'll notice we've got our draft site plan as well. This will be placed in the, the rice field to the south of the wastewater facility. That's attachment one in your packet. And we have, we've got Jeff Wiseman via Teams today. He's with Trinary Capital. He was here when we did the, the letter of intent to assist me in answering any technical questions above my, my pay grade. Yeah, but with that, that's the intro. We have, like I said, the goal is cost savings here. We think that we can, we can achieve things and help out our, help out our costs at the wastewater treatment plant. One of the big things that we changed was really diving in with this negotiation side and making sure that we had some guarantees for solar production. And we did get that. Basically, Trinary obligated to produce ninety percent of the expected solar production included for that year. If they don't do that, they will pay us the, the gap between the ninety percent back at the, the current rate. So if it was year one, we'd get eighteen cents per kilowatt paid back to us at anything below ninety percent. So that's the overview of it. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions. And Jeff's on the line as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, Joe. Jeff, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can, I can hear you quite well. Can, can you hear me? And hello to the council.
We can see you and we can hear you. There's, Amos is going to fix a little bit of an echo on your end. So, yeah, very good. Well, it's, it's working, sort of, for, for the most part. So anyway, well, thank you, Jeff, for being available tonight. So I'll turn it over, first of all, to Councilmember Rick Thomas. Rick, you have some questions?
Well, I had many questions that I'd sent in early here, and Joe and Marty did an excellent job of answering most of those. I do have a question about, because we've had an issue with the inverters on the old system. How many inverters are on this system? And do we lose a whole row of panels or individual panels if one of them should fail?
So the inverters in the build, from what I know in the configuration, and mind you, this is subject to your approval, right, for the design, is that if you lose an inverter, you do not lose a full row. You lose a select number. Mind you, all of this, again, is subject to a build that is done by Bearer Solar, and you will have input into doing that.
Well, I just would hate to see us have an inverter fail like we've had in the past and then lose all the production because it can't get through the system.
So I will tell you, we, we prefer microinverters. And the reason for that is, I think about it from our position. If, if we lose a row, an entire row of solar, that means that we lose the ability to generate revenues for our investors on that. So it's not in our best interest to have that happen either.
Well, that's the good part of that. So the question is, do we pay what is generated or based on what is estimated to be generated?
We pay what is generated.
What is generated. Thank you. I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is this system monitored twenty-four hours a day so that, and will we be notified if one of the systems or inverters or anything goes down?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. This is actually monitored by multiple systems, I believe, at least two. It's going to be monitored by our party. It's also going to be monitored by another company called Also Energy. And the reason that we do that is we need to, because this is a production-based billing system, we need to ensure that it is continually generating revenues at times where that is available. So, yes, this will be monitored, for sure.
So we would be notified if any of the systems within a certain limited amount of time while you're fixing it?
Yes. On, on, so we, Trinary Capital, we have dozens of facilities a day, and we, I mean, we have to notify you if something goes down.
Second question, since we, go ahead. Since we last tatted, or you were here, there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of news out on solar, solar installations, solar funding, solar everything. Is there anything that's happened since we started this dialogue that as of today, six-thirty, could be utilized to reduce our cost or otherwise benefit this proposal through government funding, subsidies, or other grants that are out there trying to encourage solar use?
I mean, potentially, yes. One of the reasons that I say that is there, there are other programs that are available, right? So as an example, there's USDA grants available. But we spoke about those before. Just yesterday during Earth Day, they announced a very large funding grant. I'm sorry, it's about seven billion dollars under the IRA, but that is largely reserved for residential, and you're significantly larger than residential.
Again, this is, it seems to be a constantly changing world, so I wouldn't want to, you know, buy something and then find out the next day it was different. So, and last of all.
I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Last of all, over the years of being around the city council and the city of Willow's, these kinds of proposals, long-term, high cost, relatively high cost, are challenging for members of elected bodies to understand in detail. I have read this thing sideways. I have seven hundred and sixty solar panels at Thunder Hill, and I, I just do not necessarily feel personally that ten years from now, when we looked at this and somebody came up and said, why did you do that? I'd go, uh. The question is, I don't know what the question is.
Let me, let me, let me say this. You know, as Joe stated, you're paying forty-one cents right now. You would be charged by us eighteen cents. Our escalator is two-point-nine-nine percent, right? When we run estimations using industry standard estimating software, they, in PG&E territory, they do not allow us to run a utility estimate lower than a five percent annual escalation rate in your territory. So we are actually selling you power at more than half price, the current rates today, at an escalation rate that is significantly lower than what we are allowed to present using standard software money today. So if you think about this in terms of a ride, like how, how your prices will escalate, what the industry is saying is that if you stick with the utilities, your gradient is this. We are charging you something that goes like this. We don't, we don't rise as fast as the utility rates, and we're selling it to you at a significantly lower rates than the utility rates. So algebra being algebra, our line likely will not cross the utility rates unless PG&E becomes benevolent, and maybe one day they will. I have no idea. But if we look at historically, they aren't prone to lower rates really much at all.
Very good. Thank you. In, in the narrative on this proposal, the final chapter, it says that the deal with the original developer was, oh, no, was substantially in favor of the developer. And you don't want to read that ten, five years from now, or seven, that's all.
Sure. I get that. I understand.
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
I just have one question, and it's actually on the front page of this. I, who is, who is RP Willow Solar One LLC?
That is the funding entity, Radio Powers, SPV. SPV is a special purpose vehicle, and the reason that they do that is because of tax equity funds.
Okay. And then they're just responsible for installing it, and then they, what, they sell it back to you guys to sell us the energy? Or how does that work out? Are they the?
So what, what they, they are, yeah, they are the owners of the system. You will be signing with them directly. What we have done, and I'd like to, I'd like to just say that, you know, for me and for my company, this has been a long process, and it's been a long process for you. And we've had a lot of things kind of go sideways, but we weren't going to give up. So thirteen.
Has Willow Solar One in the name, and I was, I've never heard of the company in Willow, so I was just curious as to who it was. So.
Willow's is, yeah, Willow's is, yeah.
Okay.
Willow's is a reference. Yeah, it's, it's a reference to maybe a model.
Okay. That's all I had a question on. I thought everything else looked great on the contract. I mean, it looks a lot like my home solar one that I had. And, yeah, I gotta say, there is cost savings there, so. yeah, I gotta say, there is cost savings there. So I do appreciate the handout you gave us, Joe. That was really helpful.
I'd like to hear the rest of what he was saying about.
Yeah, we're just gonna ask Jeff, if you had, did you want to finish your thought there? You said this went sideways and then, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of. I've been in a lot of solar deals. This one is one of the most unique that I've ever encountered. You know, not only because the banking crisis and the cost of money and issues with with other groups that you had dealt with years ago, right? And then to layer on top of that, what's happening within regulations for solar in in the state of California. What's been rewarding for us is that we could figure out a way to build financing tool and project package that can deliver you the kind of savings that we are. And we've also built into it hedges, because you have, you have two meters here, right? You have the main meter, which we're feeding into, and then you have a phantom meter, which is allowing you to have nine straight years of, you know, traditional reimbursement rates that people could appreciate that are now gone. You you can't get those in California because of NEM three, for lack of a better term. So we could bake in significant savings for you to to help the city, because frankly, you know, as a city, it's having a government background myself, like I do, you know, you're constantly worried about being a good steward of of the people's money. And the fact that we could help that in some way has been extremely rewarding for us. I mean that.
Yeah, thank you. Well, just, you know, on behalf of the city of Willows, you know, I I'd just like to thank you and Trinary for staying the course. I know it was difficult. There were a lot of bumps in the road. And you 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 use the word unique. Absolutely. There's, there's a lot of unique aspects that occur in around here. But thank you for, you know, working with the staff diligently and and presenting before and 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 finding finding a solution. So but you know, the the eighteen eighteen cents per kilowatt hour versus forty-one cents, and that forty-one cents is today. But God knows what it'll be in six months or next year or in five years or ten years. I mean, you know, the the way the PG&E rates are going, CPUC has never seen a rate increase they didn't like. So, you know, I I don't know why there the CPUC exists, but I had to say it. I, you know, I, it just doesn't make any sense. But, you know, I know there's legislation, there's a new assembly bill sponsored by Assemblymember James Gallagher, the the best Assemblymember in the state of California, to to counter that. But that's, that's a different subject. But no, thank you very much for, for the information for the contract. It's it's a solid contract. I know we've had extensive discussions and very robust discussions before up and to and including the December twenty twenty-three meeting. So from my perspective, Joe and Jeff and Marty, and unless I'm I'm mistaken, when I, when I took a deep dive into this, when I had, it got rained out, I had a little bit of time today before it dried out enough again to get back to it. But the initially, when I was, when I was reviewing the documents, you know, Sunday night, the only, the only change I see in this, in in this final draft contract, generally speaking, is is the NEM two issue, because we, because of the the other firm's each change of direction that the eleventh hour, we were unable to make the NEM two deadline. Do I have that assessment accurate, that being generally the only change in this contract from our discussion in December?
You are correct. We were able to get you nine years of NEM two reimbursement, because we were allowed to, well, we successfully filed you as a a NEM aggregation. That that extra meter that you have that you are not using was something that we could capitalize upon to deliver extra savings for you. So for the first nine years of this contract, you will get very good reimbursement. On year ten, and and mind you, I, I don't know what's going to happen in ten years in California, because the regulations are the regulations and they just change. But the fact that you have this extra meter, like you do, could potentially, if things develop, right? We could potentially use that to, at that time period, expand the system or or do other things to capitalize on, let's say, regulatory advantage to help your city. Let me put it that way. Because and and that's just part of the natural hedge that you have. You have two meters. You only use one.
Okay, well, very good. No, thank you. No, that's, that's, that's outstanding. You know, and I'm also looking forward to a future, future discussion that'll come before the council of future time. It's noted in the staff report. That's why I'm mentioning it with the potential solar assistance for this building, the Civic Center building, and also the fire hall. Looking very, very much forward to that and in those discussions. So I didn't have time to point this out. I'm sorry. I apologize to Joe and Marty. And Jeff, I I did find a typo in the contract. That's the only thing I saw. It's on page, page eight of the contract, which is page sixty-six of the agenda. Very, very top, very, just a minor typo in the draft. I know these are easy to miss. The very first line on page eight, I mean, I'm sorry, in page eight of the solar contract, which is actually page, again, sixty-six of the agenda. Very first line, the solar facility, at least ninety ninety, it doesn't say days after ninety. It just says the solar facility at least ninety prior to the end of the apple. Well, I'm assuming that's days.
We will fire our attorneys. Thank you for catching.
Yeah, I know, you know, several sets of eyes have been on this. I I understand. It it happens to all of us. Okay. God knows, you know, our brains work in funny ways. But that's the only, that's the only issue I saw with your, with your contract at all. That's it. There you go. So thank you.
Great.
All I had.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. Do we have a timeline for installation?
Yes, the timeline for installation in this contract is within one year. But I will tell you right now, considering how much we want to get this done, we are, if you will help us, we are going to prefile permits for you, so that the second that we get notice to proceed, we can file the permits and begin as soon as humanly possible. What I cannot do is I cannot convince the attorneys to put in something, I cannot easily convince the attorneys, I should say, to put in something that is not industry standard. And the reason for that is we are still dealing with scarcity of components, and we're still dealing with trying to find enough people to build, given the amount of demand that there is right now in California and nationwide. But we, we are three. So there, we still are dealing for some components with supply chain issues. Yes. And the reason for that is, one of the things that we want to do is we want to use American-made components on this. We don't have enough factories building that yet. As an example, we would love to use American-made packs. And given the amount of time, given the amount of time that has gone by, you know, we we just, we want to build this as much as possible. Like, we want to build this quickly. And I will tell you that the funders want to to get this built quickly as well.
Well, we appreciate that, because we're paying forty-one cents and twice as much as we need to. So.
Yeah, we know.
You approve this contract. You order the material, or do you still have to get PG&E approval or somebody's approval?
Don't, they don't need PG&E approval. I still need an interconnection agreement. My my company, we, for us, now, you're a city. Perhaps you can probably be the California Public Utilities Commission. You have far more power than we do. But ultimately, what we're going to do is we're going to move as quickly as humanly possible. We are going to prefile permits, and we need your help to do. Because you are a city. You have the ability to move things that we just can't.
Well, then I would ask our staff to work with you to see if we can't push this through. Because the sooner we do it, the bigger the savings for for the city. And the city needs to save every nickel and dime that we can. So best guess?
Less than a year. What's the deadline?
And he wants it, so I I can give you three hundred and sixty days. And that that is what is in pretty much every other contract that I've seen.
Wow.
Yeah, okay. Well, we are lost a year or so. And you keep moving. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. And Jeff, that that's just PG&E dragging their feet, basically.
Yes, the, they're, they're, the, so many people, so many people have wanted solar that the backlog of PG&E is months long. And again, you're a city. Perhaps you can exert pressures that we cannot, get them to move.
Yeah, well, we, we have a very responsive PG&E representative, so we'll definitely be working. City Willows will definitely be working with PG&E.
And she made that offer recently about this project to try to help expedite and facilitate. She can do that.
She's very good. Yeah, she does great work. Yeah, good work for us. So very good. Okay, well, thank you, Jeff. Anything further? Any further questions, comments from the council before we move forward? Anything from the public tonight? No? Okay. All right. Pleasure to the council in reference to item eight A.
Move to approve.
Councilmember Thomas has moved to approve item eight, item eight A as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There seems to be a fight over second. Councilmember Boden has seconded the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Carries unanimously four zero. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Jeff. For all your work.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you, council. Hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, we'll get PG&E, we'll get PG&E a swift kick and get this thing moving. So thank you very, thanks, Jeff. Much appreciated.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Joe. Item eight B, Financial Sustainability Advisory Committee. Consider establishing a financial sustainability advisory committee, also known as the committee, consisting of a council invited civic groups to discuss and learn more about the status of the city's budget and assist staff with executing the council-approved education action plan regarding city finances. Marty Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. The item that's before you is a recommendation based on the previous education action plan that the council approved a few meetings ago. And the idea here being to continue to use a variety of different avenues to get the word out to the public and to the community about the city's budget and finances, especially in preparation for the sales tax measure that's on the November ballot. This is actually for a different subject matter, is an approach that we used in the city of Valle, Vallejo, where we invited civic groups and then allowed the civic groups to decide who in their group would be appointed to the actual committee. And then those people would, individuals, and there'd also be an alternate, would come to regularly scheduled meetings with staff to go over a variety of different topics. In this case, it would be talking about some of the items in the education action plan and getting some feedback from this committee. And this way, those individuals can act as a an ombudsman, if you will, or an ambassador back to their civic groups to share with them what they learn in the committee and information. And it's just another avenue for disseminating information about the city's financial situation and the budget. And, you know, as you already know from the education action plan, there's a variety of different tools that we're planning to use from tabling at events to precinct walking. This is just another tool in that toolbox, if you will. And I think it would be a good, useful way to get the community to to be talking and then civic groups. And as you can see from attachment one, we came up with a list of civic groups, civic organizations in Willows, as many as we could find or think of. Got some ideas from some of you as well. We didn't put them directly in the staff report. We thought that it would be better for the council to review the list and decide if there's, if if this approach is amenable to the council, if there are groups on here in particular that you would like the staff to invite to a committee such as this one or all of them. I I don't, you know, that is obviously the purview of the council. And of course, the whole idea in itself is within the purview of the council. So that pretty much concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions for me.
No, thank you very much, Marty. Councilmembers? Questions? Comments?
Marty, do you have any experience on the participation by civic groups when we're dealing with a governmental issue? I don't want to term it political, but some groups would not want to engage. Do we know, have any experience of committee pushback?
On having a committee such as this?
Some of these service organizations involved?
No, because, well, in the situation in Vallejo that I was thinking of, it was round participatory budgeting, which is an approach to budgeting and allowing members of the public to put something on a ballot, and then they get to vote on it. And so there was a steering committee that was made up of civic groups like this that guided the entire PB, we call PB for short, because it's easier, the whole process. But again, it was about budgeting. And I can tell you that was a very, very contentious situation, because it was the first citywide participatory budgeting process in North America at the time in twenty eleven. And there were definitely representatives who were not, thought it was crazy idea to allow the public to put their own projects on a ballot and get, allow them to vote on it. So there was, actually, it was kind of an interesting process, because it it's not a place to 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 vent or discuss your politics. It's a place to learn about the budget and and ask, you know, line of questioning and inquiry and discussion. It isn't intended to, and this committee wouldn't be any different. It's not intended to persuade people to do one thing or another. It's a, it's a place to understand the city's financial situation better and provide some guidance on how we might, within the context of the plan, you've already approved some guidance and how we might help get that information out. And so I guess my recommendation would be a clear message from the council, if this interests you, that you're not appointing individuals who are coming on to, you know, derail the committee meeting and turn it into event session. We were pretty successful with preventing people from doing that in Vallejo for those people that thought PB was a crazy idea. And I would recommend with, you know, council support, if you were going to move forward with this, that it would be the same thing. The message is it's a place to learn and help guide an already sanctioned, council sanctioned education action plan. It's not a place to share your politics around how you hate taxes or how you don't believe that the budget is the problem that it is, or that we stole money from the sewage fund and gave it to the general fund. That's not what this committee would be about. And hopefully, the council would agree to that, and that those kind of parameters would be made very clear at the very first meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marty, we we know that, and and it's been a strong belief of mine, that the transition from the perception that the city and the government doesn't reveal, doesn't do this, transparency, the opportunity for people to to choose to, to be involved, to to have open books, look at documents that are real, and and all that's necessary to get from where we were and where we are currently being accused of being by some, out and away and gone forever. There's nobody on this dais that has anything but the best moral character and qualities of intent and honesty. There's nobody here that proposes to gain from being here at the expense of anyone, especially the citizens. And but yet that prevails, that idea somehow prevails or at least exists out there. I want it gone. That's why I like this. I know it's cumbersome. I know that some people will use these opportunities for the countermeasures, which will be sometimes painful. But the bottom line is, we have, we have a job to do. We have to overcome a unfortunate impression that is somehow reinforced that we are not in the, here for the best interests of the citizens, because we are. We are. Staff is. You are. There's nothing here that I can't say I'm proud of. Well, let's get it out there. Let's, let's get in front of people. Let's talk, tell the true story, even the bad stuff. And let's let them know that we're sincere, honest, and above board beyond reproach.
That sounds good.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David. Well said. Mr. Hudson?
Nothing to say on this. That's good. Yeah, I look forward to seeing how this works out and get the word out and let people make the decision on the future of our city. That's our job. Just put it in their hands. And that's what we're doing. Us putting a tax measure on the ballot isn't saying yes, it's not saying no, it's giving the people an option to make a choice. And I wish every orange chair out here was filled with the citizens that were concerned about this and that everyone actually come and and speak their piece on it, and if they have other ideas of ways for us to get us out of a financial crisis that they would, you know, show up and voice those concerns because this is what we're coming up with with the four of us that are here. And if there's pushback out there, I'd more than welcome to come in here and explain that to us. Throw out some suggestions on how we're going to save this town. That's our job. We're here for the future. So, yeah. Excited for this.
Is this going to be a standing committee or an ad hoc?
I I I, well, I just, before you answer that, I just want to say that I envision this as having a timeframe, right, for now until the end of the year, let's just say, and that after that, you know, there may be an interest on the council. I mean, we don't really know what, how this will go to continue it. I mean, maybe this committee is enthusiastic and excited about the budget and the council likes the idea and you want to continue some level of of financial oversight. Maybe it turns into a once a quarter meeting with with the committee members. I mean, it could turn into something else, but feasibly for the time being, I envision it being something through the end of the calendar. So what would that be?
So that would not necessarily be a standing committee. You're talking about a very defined purpose and a defined timeframe. It and it's advisory only, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not a standing committee. I think just as you go forward, if at the end of the year you want to continue it, then it turn into something else and depends on who's on it, who's sitting. If there's anyone from the council, if it's just staff, if it's just members of the public, that sort of thing, that all depends. But at this point, it would be
more like an ad hoc. We would appoint two council members to participate regularly with this group.
If you wanted to do that.
Have to be, we'd have to notice the meeting.
Correct. If all four of you are going to be there, if two of you are going to be there, what would normally happen is you would form a two-person ad hoc committee, and then this would be a citizen stakeholder group that you would work through.
Size? What would be a quality, a perfect size for this? Because I imagine five is probably not enough, and twenty-five would be too many.
Yeah, so here's the 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 challenge. I can tell you with the the committee we had in Vallejo that I mentioned earlier, that was a twenty-one person steering committee, seven council members, each got three appointments. It was certainly challenging to have a steering committee that side. I was on a steering committee for the citizen advisory committee for the general plan update for Solana County. That was a twenty-person steering committee, very challenging for sure. But here's one of one of the things to keep in mind about this, and so you have this list before you. The idea of an invitation is writing a letter that comes from me presumably, inviting their, these groups' participation to appoint one person and an alternate and letting them decide who wants to participate or not. But there might be groups here that don't want to participate. And so therein lies the challenge is if, you know, if we selected all of them and and only five respond, well, then that's what we get. So I I guess my recommendation would be that the council, you know, maybe you decide to each choose, you know, three civic groups that we approach. Each of you get three, so that would be twelve. And that there's a, and then there's like a backup one that if nobody from those groups, you know, applies, so that I'm I'm sure to get at least a twelve-person steering committee. I think beyond twelve people, it starts to get more and more challenging and cumbersome, and and twelve in itself is isn't going to be easy. But this is a tremendous opportunity for, it's a different kind of committee than a planning commission, right? That that this is a tremendous opportunity that's that could also be a teaching moment. And so I I don't also want to, I wouldn't want to make it too small either and and leave out, you know, groups. I think, you know, it's council's discretion, really. I'll work with whatever you direct me to work with.
And this is strictly for people that live within the city limits, correct? We're not, just because they're part of the group, they might live in Glen or, you know, Ford Ben. We're not.
That's a good question. I didn't make that. I mean, I think if you wanted to make that clear as a council that that's important, then
I think it'd be hard to have a steering committee that's doesn't live within the city limits steer the city in a direction that, you know what I mean, like?
Well, they're they're giving input on the education action plan. I wouldn't call it steering, but I think that's a good point. If you want to make it clear, th- these are civic groups that serve the city, but there probably are members that don't necessarily live in the city limits. So if that's important to the council, then that could be a criteria that could be outlined in an invitation letter that the appointee needs to live in the city limits, and so does the alternate.
Since so much of the city's not in the city, could we do sphere of influence instead?
Sure, as in like the general plan sphere of influence?
Yeah, because we have all those folks north of the railroad that are not in the city, so sphere of influence.
Yeah, and I I want to be clear that I'm, you know, I'm going to be, you know, unless you direct me otherwise, I'm going to be fairly firm with the steering committee if we start to go off track from the focus of what this is about. You know, again, I, you know, I'm I'm pretty good at that, actually. So, you know, this isn't going to be a group of people coming in and sort of derailing the whole process and going, you know, that's not going to be permitted. You have to be a game player, and you have to come with an open mind and an idea of a line of inquiry of trying to understand our situation and give some feedback on some of the approaches, and and hopefully, maybe even some people that are willing to volunteer that want to be at a table at Lamb Derby where I'm going to be on May eleventh with some information about the city in, under a canopy that says City of Willows with a table and tablecloth that says, find your, find your refuge in historic Willows, just like our banners. Maybe there will be people in this group that will want to also volunteer for things like that. I mean, that's a hope. Right?
No, in interesting approach, Marty. And, you know, I, you know, we've suggested different organizations, and I, as you know, I suggested a number of these organizations. I'm a, I'm a member of four of the bodies at least, just, you know, off my head. But, yeah, and Evan, a good point, but, you know, I I don't want to, I think this is, I think this is a good, you know, you know, educational informational approach, you know, to contact the different, different service organizations in the community. Also, we don't want to slight anybody who might not be on this. I mean, just off the top of my head, I was throwing names out. You know, and I I
Right.
We certainly don't want to miss anybody, but I I think it's a good idea to to invite all the groups. And Rick, your your question and and some of the other comments I I've heard, sure. You know, a number of the fraternal organizations that I belong to will not, are not politically active organizations, would not participate in this. You know, for example, the, you know, the Masonic groups, I, a number of which I belong to, that's not what the mission is. So, and of course, there there's no longer a lodge here anymore. It unfolded years, years and years ago. But having that said, I I think it's a good idea to extend the invitation out and and like you said, Marty, I say this is an interesting approach because obviously, you're going to have to be closely managing this and on top of it.
Yes.
To to keep it mission critical as an informational, educational of aspect and not, you know, get derailed and go off in every different direction, you know, so. And as we all know, and and Ricky, you led to this, the larger the group, the harder it is to manage. So I think that, you know, if if we did extend the invitation, from my point of view, extend the invitation to all the groups we can think of. A number of groups probably won't be interested. Some hopefully will be interested. And, you know, and and more the merrier, and and Marty, you'll manage it closely. And and, you know, we'll we'll go from there. I think it's a good idea. Like David said, this is just part of educating the public.
I mean, there, you know, there's always an element of risk. I understand that all too well. I think, though, we, I mean, it's worth the risk, and I hope you think so, too, so.
Well, and and David, you you alluded to it.
No, I agree, Marty. You know, this, we're a very fiscally conservative city. This is a very fiscally conservative body and and always has been. We don't go around spending, wasting money.
Not what I read in the paper.
That's not what we read in the paper, David, but let's not, as we all know here, after being on the council, let's not, let's not get, let the facts get in the way of a good story, as as we know constantly in this community. And it's sad. It's sad. This is, you know, a- as you said, David, this council is made up of, the majority made up of of individuals trying to do the right thing in their hearts and their head, right? Trying to do the right thing for the community, upholding in our own. Four of us do that. And we're hard at doing, and and we we and we have a, you know, a great community here. We have a viable community, a great, a great city, a great small city, a fantastic staff. We've got a lot going for us here. So and when individuals get involved and and learn the facts and don't believe on, you know, don't listen to the rumors and the and the made up stories, is, hey, you know, these are the facts, not, this isn't a story. And and that that will be eye opening for individuals if if they so choose to, you know, open, open their eyes and wel- willing to learn. So, but I I think it's, yeah, I I think, I think this is a good approach. And, you know, it's 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 going to be a large shore on top of already a large plate you have. But thank you, Marty, for, and you, thank you for presenting this this approach as an educational informational plan, and thank you for taking, you know, volunteering to take, take it on.
We're fresh out of silver bullets, so it's going to have to be a multi-pronged approach.
I have a really quick question as I'm looking down the list, and don't we have a volunteer sheriffs group or some organization?
They're on here.
They are there? Where?
Glen County Church and Rescue, Glen County.
Oh, that's.
Yep.
Oh, they.
Thank you.
Police service.
One thing I know is churches are not on here. We do have the Knights of Columbus, which could be, but we have.
They are on here, but.
Knights are on.
Knights are on, but but the but other.
YLI, YLI is on, but other churches.
The other churches would, I would think you would have some very committed folks.
That's a good idea. Good point. Yeah. There is, yeah.
So we have a list of churches that courtesy of the city clerk that we generated along with this list for the speakers bureau that we were going to be reaching out to and asking for if they'd like to have a speaker from someone on the council or even their city manager, but maybe not. But anyways.
You'll be great. So I.
We could add those churches if you want to this list, you know.
I like the idea. I, for me, I like the idea of people of interest to the city of Willows, so like a, like a five-mile radius of the city of Willows or those that live or work within the city limits.
Yeah, the general plan.
I think, yeah, we could choose to experiment.
It'll do what we want.
Yeah, but I I also, I'm I'm looking at our staff here. None of them live within a five-mile radius. I don't know if Amos does or not, but, you know, none live within a five-mile radius, but they still have they do still care about the city of Willows. So, like I'm saying, even those employed here that maybe live outside the area should also open, that opens the door a little bit more. But with that, are we ready?
So I, sorry, let me just, I want to just summarize what we're doing here. So we're going to use the general plan sphere of influence. You're okay with that, as well as, and the the selected person who's appointed and or their alternate need to either live or work within the sphere of influence of the general plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the third item.
If I live in the county and not, but work in the sphere.
That that's a discretion of the council.
That's what I was, I mean, if you work out at room amount of cheese, I think that you have a pretty big concern about Willows growing or, you know, if you
Even if you live in.
You want a business here.
I don't see downside to it.
No.
There's the downside.
Yeah, and the hope is that that they're they're going back to their group, whatever their group is or their church and disseminate, hey, this is what I've learned, this is what I've been learning about and understanding what's going on with the city's budget. I had no idea, or maybe I had every idea, who knows? So the idea of using the groups as a way to get, you know, disseminate information. So we would lose, use the church list that we have. You would either live or work within this general plan sphere of influence. You'd appoint, they can appoint one person and an alternate. And are we saying we're going to just cast a wide net and see an invitation letter and see who responds both this list and the churches list we have?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay.
We have consensus that are broken.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Sounds like a plan.
So then we would need to create an ad hoc committee tonight.
If you want, if you want that, or do you want to start?
I, I mean, it's up to the council if you want an ad hoc committee. I don't think, did I?
No, this is not an ad, there's no.
There's no ad hoc in this, but if you, if the council wants to agendaize that for another meeting.
Well, you can set an ad hoc at any time. Can we create, correct. So that could be created if you wanted to set up an ad hoc to to communicate with the steering or group or, I mean, I don't know, Marty, if you were envisioning it being staff-driven that you're reporting back to the council or?
Yeah, I mean, I think it it has to pretty much be me and, you know, I might bring in another staff person.
It it does also, you you know, you're talking about transparency and getting ideas from others coming back. I will tell you, historically speaking, in situations I've had, if you have an ad hoc that's dealing with this committee from the public, there are sometimes accusations that you're trying to to influence them one direction or the other, rather than having staff deal with them solely, so it's free and clear from the council.
All right.
Yeah, as far as the, I I'd like to just, my recommendation would be to move, move forward without an ad hoc committee. This time, that would be my thoughts, Rick.
No, I, I, I like what she said.
Yeah, and I, and we want to enable our city manager to move forward based on the plan and vision as it is now, so please do, whatever.
That's very good.
Yep. Is that sufficient?
Yes, it is. I think that's clear. Yep.
You have direction?
Yes, I do.
Okay, any further questions? Comments, councilmembers? Okay, Marty, thank you for bringing this forward. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll keep you all posted for sure.
I I know you will. Thank you. Item eight C, Library Board of Trustees vacancy and appointment process. Direct staff to solicit application to fill a library board of trustees vacancy. Marty?
I'm going to hand this over to the city clerk.
I see that. City clerk, Amos Uber. Amos gets.
Yep, thank you. Uh, so almost two weeks ago, Robert Griffith on the library board resigned. Has some severe health issues, so leaving it at that, is unable to serve on the board. Uh, so that leaves us with a vacancy. We're just asking that the council authorize us to go out and solicit for applicants to fill that vacancy. And once we've received applications, we'll work with the library ad hoc committee, AKA the vice mayor, to do some interviews and bring back a recommendation to the council for a new appointment.
So move.
Second.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Hudson has moved. Councilmember Thomas has seconded to approve item eight C as presented.
And I just want to expand on that. The, for those who do not use the library, and I am one of those people that do not use it. But I've been on the board since I've are been their, I guess liaison is the best word for it, since I've joined. And they do a lot of good work, you know, they they offer days for kids. They're going to have an animal day here coming up. Unfortunately, my notes are in my truck, which is in Chico right now, not with me. So unfortunately, I don't have my notes in front of me. But they do a lot of just different events, different things for the kids, the youth of the city. You know, and not just the youth, but everybody, whether it's their eBooks, whether it's their audiobooks. They have a lot of free resources for people to go in and use, including their computers. And they they really do step up and try and do their part for the city. I believe that the the current board does go above and beyond in making sure, you know, I know they're working on float plans for the Lamb Derby Parade and a book and bake sale that's coming up. As I said, unfortunately, I don't have my notes with the dates on that, right, unless you know. But I do think that this is an important thing, and to make sure we keep it going. So.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, I I agree with, you know, my my ten-year-old granddaughter, she's, she's a huge fan of the library, and they've just got great services down there. And Jody, Jody Mazer, library director, Katie Ehorn, and and the entire library team just do an amazing job. We have a fantastic, fantastic facility. Kudos, kudos to them for their outstanding work. Any further discussion?
No, that was, that was all I had to say.
I just like to say just one, one more item. I like to publicly thank my good friend Bob Griffith for his longtime dedication services to City Willows, former councilmember Bob Griffith, and longtime library board member. He was, just loves the library and just has done a lot of work, not only for the library, but, you know, the entire city as a whole for many. Good man, he and his wife, Georgia, good man, good people, active, community involvement. Good man, him and his wife Georgia, good man, good people, active, community involvement, out there doing the right thing. And uh, I, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with him. I I called him yesterday and and spoke to Ian Georgia and he's, you know, a sudden health crisis come on and uh, you know, he just, he's a good man. So and he's uh, handling it head on. And I just wanna thank him for his outstanding services to City Willow's. So, thank you, Bob. All those in favor of approving uh item uh eight C as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Very special. There you go, Amos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Be hearing from the uh committee in the very near future. Item nine, comments and reports. Item ninety, council correspondence. I have received no council correspondence for this meeting. Marty, am I missing something?
Nope, I don't think so.
Very good. That's good news.
You don't have anything either, do you, Amos? No.
So, uh, I'm gonna move to item uh nine C, city manager report. Marty, I I inadvertently skipped right over the city manager report last meeting and and I apologized after the meeting and you said you didn't have any information. And I I I'm sorry, I.
And I hate to say it, I I don't again.
I just didn't wanna.
I'm just busy.
You know.
Working on the budget right now, and then we're gonna work on this.
Funny, but it's like a single line here. I don't know. I tried to pull it up, try to pick it up. So. Okay, item nine B, city council comments and reports. Who would like to begin? Gentlemen, any volunteers?
I'll go first.
Mr. Thomas.
I see on Facebook that a new store called Treasure Time will be opening at one thirty West Sycamore on Saturday, April twenty seventh. So I'm excited to hear that we have um, that Jessica Tapia has, as the owner, has put forth that effort. So she says she's gonna offer event planning and eclectic collection of furniture, tableware, both new and used. So I congratulate her and welcome her to the city. The last item I have, I would like to respond to Mr. Sprague's commentary in Saturday's Valley Mirror to the people in the audience and those online and those who may listen to this recording. The city council is charged with making policy and finding solutions to the issues facing the city. Mr. Sprague is opposed to the sales tax increase. He alludes that it is because it does not require a two thirds majority to pass specifically requiring it be spent only on public safety. You will recall that he was opposed to the public safety measure from a few years back. He acknowledges that Willow's is broke and that is not debatable. That was his words. His solution to create a situation to put the city's survival at even greater risk. He contends to tell the people that the city is to blame, misuse of public funds, poor fiscal management, dysfunctional management and weak leadership and more. It's real easy to put these statements out with little or no evidence as designed for one purpose, to emote distrust in the people with the current city staff and council. His motivation is to beat the sales tax. Mr. Sprague has a long history of railing against the city. Commentary after commentary, he assails the city and city staff, and it continues. His Saturday commentate commentary states past and still ongoing misuse of sewer funds. Yet he moved and voted for the mid-year budget adjustments that included the correction of charges to the sewer fund back to this general fund, which would have never been correctly charged. The annual adjustment was a hundred and six thousand dollars plus. Now, as a council member, he's in a position to work to correct all of his perceived wrongs, but instead he continues his assault with blame, innuendo and half truths. Back in two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Sprague was all over in his commentary and letters about the city council about the variation in the interim city manager's contract with content with the final contract. His issue, the interim contract states the city council shall emphasize establishing any new objectives and goals for the city manager versus the final contract removes the word shall and states mutually agreed. He alludes that the city manager, in concert with the city attorney, bamboozled the city council. The fact is that the city council is the employer of the city manager and provides direction as it seems appropriate, including goals and objectives. So why is this important? Upon taking his seat at the council dais, he requested a performance evaluation of the city manager be agendized. Tonight's closed session is a conclusion of a long process in completing the city manager's performance evaluation. The process included the written individual assessment by each council member, combined with the city attorney into one document, then reviewed and concurrence. Mr. Sprague, in his representation of the people, declined to participate in this evaluation. It, I don't know why, but it would seem that it doesn't fit his narrative, because it certainly is an area which required much of his attention in the past. I believe Mr. Sprague does not want the city to succeed at any cost. That his animosity steams from his building subdivision and houses in Willow's twenty years ago, where he ran afoul with the city manager, the then city manager and the council, and they made his life difficult. Willow's for him is one giant conspiracy and his efforts are to show him with the white hat and a, I told you so at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Good luck.
Well, that's a tough one to follow. But oddly enough, Mr. Thomas, and I haven't discussed this with you, but I I too read the article on Saturday and I believe strongly in the value to the citizens of the of Willow's that the sales tax revenue generation will be good for them. Uh, I um, I, so I wanted to point out a few things I thought were needed to be pointed out, including the statement that right in the opening paragraph that says the city of Willow's is broke. It is not broke. We have a financial problem that over time will result in difficult situations, but we're not broke. So if you say we're broke, then uh, why did you say that? I suppose it was for effect. Uh, and and it is because, well, then he listed a series of things, misuse of public funds and, you know, I I know that he believes strongly that it happened in the past. But he makes it sound like it's happening today. That's why I did that.
It's happening today.
That shit about, you know, nobody here. I mean, to the best of my ability, as a person who created a business from a grass field and college graduate, MBA and everything else I can bring to the table, if I thought things were screwy, I'd be all over the solutions and the and the exposure, if that were the right word. So I I don't know what to say. He says he voted no on the one percent sales tax and that somehow uh, we we all got smart because we were stupid at one percent. And then we got smart and went to one point five. I wanna point out for the record that the one percent number was an understanding that it wasn't enough on my brain, by me, but that I felt as a marketing kind of personality that one percent, and I wanted dot nine, if anybody remembers, but one percent was probably the top we could expect to to successfully work with the citizens. But when we went to one point five and this dais said one point five is the right answer, boy, I was already that all five of us were gonna get behind it. But that didn't happen. Uh, let's see here. Forgive me. Um, let's see, one percent is really insufficient. Okay, we did that one already. Um, let's see, the new law enforcement officer there, effective law enforcement is essential for the city's economic growth. Of course it is. Uh, nobody disputes that. In fact, when the sales tax program will in fact provide revenue for police services and fire as needed, but we have the ability and discretion and good judgment to use it in the best interest of the citizens. Uh, uh, he voted no on this, whatever the way they vote. Oh, so here, I like this line. And I voted no because the city manager and the other councilmen want to spend the new revenue in whatever way they want. How do you feel about that? So um, uh, spent only for law, he wants it only for law enforcement. I believe that Rick, as Mr. Thomas says, that really the thing that that does by designating it to a specific area is it requires a larger percentage of the people to vote yes. The effect of that will be probably, in my opinion, a no. So it achieves the same goal. It's out there. Overreaching this entire uh, so the pot, all the stuff about the past, ongoing misuse of other money pots. Here's the sewer fund and the development. I'll pinpoint the mismanagement and lack of oversight of those funds in upcoming commentaries. And all I wanna say is, why? Why? How do the citizens of Willow's benefit by that? By spending time, effort and energy, making them feel uncomfortable, unsure and perhaps even suspect of the people who are trying to the best of their ability to make a better town for them. So I I just, I wish that the people, as has been said tonight, had the information and knowledge that you get when you step up to the table and I'm and and get the data and get the facts and get the realities and 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 will vote based on knowledge and personal decision making and not stuff like that.
Thank you, Mr. Rudd. Ms. Johnson.
I agree. I mean, I said my piece last meeting when he brought up that it needed to be a special sales tax. Fortunately, he can't be here tonight. Um, because I'd much rather say things in front of people. Um, but my only selfish intent for being up here is to make sure that there's a city here for my kids. And for somebody to think that I'm gonna do something other than what's best for them and for their future, um, just doesn't make sense. I didn't get a chance to read the article until late last night. Uh, I got in from being out of town over the weekend, um, for my kids' sports, which I make sure I always attend. Um, and yes, public safety is a priority for the city. However, there are multiple needs for the city. And the funds gained by the sales tax will be spent accordingly to serve the people of Willow's the best if we get them. And alls we did was put something on the ballot. And then here we are having to second guess ourselves and respond to false allegations. Um, it's actually really disheartening to have people like this um who are willing to do this sort of behavior. Um, it's a political snake in the grass. Um, and I don't appreciate it. It's unacceptable. This is not the type of people that the city of Willow's needs um allegedly supporting them. Um, if they wanna support them, there are thirty plus orange chairs in here for them to come up and talk to at the mic. Um, and if they're not doing that, saying they don't want this, then I really have a hard time with believing a lot of things that are being written about us. So with that being said, I'm here for the people. Like I said, my only selfish interest is to make sure that there's still a town here for my kids to grow up in and hopefully my grandkids. Um, yeah. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edson. I uh, wholeheartedly agree with all of your comments. Uh, and uh, unfortunately, Mr. Sprague is not present tonight for our meeting. And uh, I uh, and and Evan, like you said, I, you know, I I uh, don't talk behind people I talk, talk to, to people. Uh, I did, uh, and as you all witnessed, my comments uh, uh, several months ago during open session. However, that was the night that our brand new audio video system went down. So and we had hardly anybody in the audience, as we have now. No one in the audience right now. We had one member, uh, one, one citizen who who has, who has since left. But uh, yeah, your 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 comments are all factual. How about that word factual? Like I said, David, don't let the facts get in the way of a good story. Mr. Sprague has a a long time history of of spinning his yarn, his his viewpoints, his his version, uh, non-factual version. Uh, you know, his his viewpoints of the law, his rendition of the law. Well, you know, his comments are are mean spirited. Uh, uh, his actions are completely unethical. He is intentionally misleading the public uh continuously. Uh, he has uh, written about me, God knows, for years and uh, and former colleagues in the council. But he's fascinated with me for some reason. Uh, I agree, Rick. He, and I said this the night that our audio video went down. I believe he is on a mission to destroy the city of Willow's at all costs for some perceived alleged slights, which never occurred to him, my knowledge. I've never done anything to the guy. He's come after me. He's attacked, he's attacked uh, uh, family members of mine as well. Uh, uh, from his keyboard, not face to face, mind you, not face to face, from his keyboard. I spent a lifetime dealing with bullies. He's a bully with a keyboard. And uh, I dealt with bullies from a law enforcement perspective for many, for decades, decades. I put a lot of bullies in jail and prison. Many of those bullies are still in prison and will be there for the rest of their lives. But I don't like bullies. And uh, this, this is, this is just nonsense. It's unethical behavior. Is is continuous, is lies, is 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 yarn spinning, is uh, uh, you know, the uh, not misstatements that, that Rick, you alluded to, half truths, half truths, outright lies, his his version of the story. Uh, uh, you know, it's, like I said, don't let the facts get in the way of a good story. I'll say it again. It's, it, this is just, this is just insane. I I don't understand. Uh, uh, you know, I I don't understand people, people like that. I just, uh, he offers no solutions, just criticism. He's, he's, he's hung up on the sewer enterprise. Sewage, sewage delivery and and sewage treatment and sewage collection is expensive. It's expensive. We're in clay soil here. And I, you know, I I I won't, I won't waste, waste your time going, going down that road. But but uh, as you know, uh, as is presented on a regular basis, almost every, you know, very, very frequently at our meetings, you know, every other meeting, it seems like we're, we're, you know, approached by staff for for additional expenditure approval for for costly sewage maintenance uh, that has to be done, has to be done. Uh, otherwise we'll be out of compliance on our sewage treatment and and we can't let that happen. So anyway, I just, you know, enough of that. I I, if anybody in the public ever wants to speak to me about any of these uh, these thoughts or comments, uh, you know, I just, it's, it's just, uh, it's, it's insane, the amount of deliberate dis- disinformation and and hatred and just evil intentions are spewed on on uh, on on the city of Willow's and our staff and our team and former staff members and uh, hardworking, honest, uh, professional individuals. And Evan and Rick and David, you all said it. You know, we're, we're serving the city council because we want, we want Willow's to be the best place Willow's could be. And I I would like this a place for my kids, grandkids and great grandkids to to live in and thrive if they so choose. And that's why we're here. As I said earlier, uh, you're, you're, you're here for the right reason. You, uh, I, I am, I am proud to uh, to work with you on the council. Uh, you're, you're all, you're good men. You're here for the right reason, using your heart and your head, trying to do the right thing, doing the right thing, not trying, trying your your best to do the right thing and and uh, for for the city of Willow's and our citizens. And uh, and I, I'm uh, I'm proud to work with you. I'm happy to work with you. I consider all of you uh, uh, my friends now. Uh, we, we worked together for for some period of time and uh, and I applaud your actions and and uh, and your services to City Willow's. And it's a, it's a pleasure serving with you. Uh, with that, I just uh, uh, have uh, uh, one more comment. We had our fifth and final joint uh, Gling Groundwater Authority, Inclusa Groundwater Authority Board of Directors meeting this past Friday morning here in Willow's. It was a location also in Palusa. Uh, we approved the revised groundwater sustainability plan. Uh, that, that uh, we also, I also attended, we had five uh, staff and and chair level meetings with uh, Department of Water Resources key personnel as we worked through this uh, groundwater sustainability plan issue as our plan was deemed incomplete as well. Others were uh, 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 you know, statewide. Uh, so those uh, those corrections have been made.
Sorry. Somewhere we moved, or both of us moved at the same time and created interference.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Anyway, I I thought maybe Amos was living his Navy days. It sounded kinda like a, a ship's horn or something.
Gary, could I ask, you, can you give us an update on the site's reservoir in any way, shape from your world and.
No, only, I, oh, David, only, all I know is what I get from the news sources. Uh, yeah, uh, I I know they spend a lot of money and there's still not a gallon of water anywhere ready to be stored. I mean, it's just that, you know, and and so much of that red tape could be cut not only at the federal level, but at the state level also with our governor. And for whatever reason, it's not. I I don't understand, but we need it.
I was hoping that the construction was gonna start within a year. That was the last thing I heard.
It's supposed to. That's.
Well, I'll, I'll take the positive and say, okay.
Same thing I heard, which would be great for our Basin Street development, wouldn't it?
Everything. It's gonna be an economic impact of magnitude.
Economic, yeah, economic.
The smart people are buying in now.
Absolutely. For our, for our entire, for our entire, entire city will benefit hugely from that. When it, it, when it hap, it's going to, it's going to happen. But I understand within a year.
That's what I heard.
Again, but why it takes twelve years to get that done is beyond.
Old news.
So, yeah. So anyway, that's all I had uh, in reference to that. Uh, a lot of work. We were on a one hundred and eighty day timeline for that. So, yeah, so anyway, that's all I had, uh, in reference to that, uh, a lot of work, we were on a one hundred and eighty day timeline for that. We made the timeline and the, uh, uh. Revised plan will be going to Department of Water Resources and we await their, uh, response. So with that, that's all I had, if, uh, gentlemen have anything else before we move into closed session?
Nope.
Okay.
Very good, no.
Moving on to item ten, closed session, pursuit of government code sec. Section five four nine five four point three, the public will have an opportunity to directly address allegedly the body on the item below. Prior to the council convening in closed session, and public comments are generally, generally restricted to three minutes. The item is item ten A, public employee performance evaluation, section five four nine five seven of the government code, title city manager. Is there any public comment in reference to this matter at this time? There is none because there's no member, there are no members of the public here, uh, left this evening. So, uh, the time is, uh, seven thirty-one PM, and we'll be moving into closed session at this time, have a good night, thank you.
Night.
Well, good evening, good evening, everyone, again, it is, uh, uh, still Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the time is seven fifty-three. PM. And we're reconvening into open session from, uh, item ten A, our closed session item. Uh, the report out is no reportable action. Time is seven fifty-four, straight up. Meeting adjourned, have a good rest of the week, good night.